Today, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty, at six A.M., this is a work session. P.M., not A.M., okay. At beginning, I would like to read you something relate to the coronavirus. Why we have a smaller amount of citizen or attendant in the meeting. This meeting tonight is unprecedented for Haltam City and the nation as a whole. Due to the COVID nineteen or coronavirus and the declaration of public health emergency, which have been declared by me for the health and welfare of our community. We would refer a meeting where no citizens are present. But because of the open meetings law, we have to allow citizen to attend and give them the right to speak on matters on the agenda. Even thought I would lie to this course, anyone putting themselves at risk, even in a gathering this small. However, because we are required to set distance standard of at least six feet, we can only allow twelve citizen to sit in council chambers. Our council has been split in the setting seating to allow for more distance. With our city manager Reg Phil, city attorney Wayne Austin, and city secretary Archamacho sit down below the desk. We have also require each attending citizen to fill out a personal information from information form in case we have a viral outbreak and it's a link to this meeting. There are so many change, but we are doing our best to conduct a meeting. Yet, stay within the standards set by the Open Meetings Act and the Emergency Declaration. It would have been the easiest thing to cancel our meeting tonight, but we are required by law to meet on issues that must be determined by council action this evening. We are allowing citizen to email in comments at they watch the council meeting on television. This meeting will be streamed live on the city website and the email information here also listed. I ask that you please be patient with the council and city staff at they do their best to make this transaction transition in the midst of an ever-changing situation. Addition, I would like to thank you for the senior season center today and the people who volunteer to deliver food for senior season, and we will continue to do that tomorrow. At this time, I know everyone panic and fear, me too, but try keep our level the lowest we can. We will get through with this. So, thank you so much. God bless you. Thank you. At this moment, I will open the, I call, I will open visitor and citizen forum. Is anyone, you have any phone, anyone feel anything? Okay, go ahead. Okay.
We have one from Grace Cattia. She states from fifty-two thirty-two Muro Lake Drive Council. Now that we've had an outbreak in our area, what is the procedure of steps we're going to take in order to prevent more cases? Not only that, but will there be testing for Haltam City residents? If so, when and how? Lastly, will we be assured that our communities are safe? Thank you. We have one from Glenn Reed at forty-nine oh-five Stanley Keller. Due to the virus, it is my opinion that Haltam City should be in a shelter-in-place condition as soon as possible. Courtney Brogan from fifty-seven twenty-one Brassus Drive. Hello, my name is Courtney Brogan, and I am a new resident of Haltam City. I'm very disappointed the leadership not fulfilling a shelter-in-place yet. My previous home state, New Mexico, has a lowercase count in Texas, but they announced a shelter-in-place to help prevent the spread of the COVID nineteen. A shelter-in-place is needed because people are not listening to the current guidelines. Do your part and lock down before this gets even worse. Thank you for your time. And that's for the citizens' comments. We have other citizens that have replied in regard to items as they appear on the agenda.
You have only one? You have any more?
No.
Okay, as is someone in the audience would like to speak on season visitor forum? I see none, so I go ahead to close the visitor season forum at six oh eight. The next one would be MedStar COVID nineteen presentation, but make sure when you do presentation, try keep this then, you know, comply with the CDC and make sure everybody say thank you. Go ahead, you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
MedStar's graciously provided some information for you guys. They just got a very short presentation and it's on the COVID nineteen outbreak, and they will have some time for question and answer. And for those of y'all that may not, or citizens may not be aware, MedStar is our ambulance provider that provides the service for our community.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, thanks for allowing us to come and update you on a little pandemic thing we've got going on here in our community. Sure. My name is Doug Cooten. I'm the CEO for MedStar Mobile Healthcare. And we do provide the EMS for the city of Haltam and fourteen other cities in the metroplex. And you guys happen to be part of the authority that owns us, so here's the update, right? So, just real quickly, let's talk a little bit about the pandemic. I'd like to thank Chief Jacobs. You know, part of this whole pandemic thing is about communicating, and no one has done a better job at communicating with us and everyone else associated with the responses that we're making than Chief Jacobs and his department. And they've done a fantastic job of working with us during these really tough times. And he and I both get these emails from the Public Health Department that tell us about people who are under investigation, patients under investigation that might be in your city. So, we put those into our CAD, he puts them into his CAD, so that if we get a response to that, that location, we know that what we're getting ourselves into, we can take precautions for that. So, he and I do that on a regular basis, talking all the time. We also attend multiple conference calls. You know, today, my, my day was seven different conference calls, all about the coronavirus, you know, federal, state, local. So, we're really staying in tuned what goes on with the external environment. Internally, we're doing phone calls Monday, Wednesday, Friday with all of our employees. So, on a sort of a town hall thing every week to keep them updated on all the activities that are going on. So, it's a big effort on a lot of people's part. So, our number one job is to ensure personal safety for all of our employees and to assure that the community gets the responses that it needs. Through this, I think the biggest thing is to continue to communicate with Haltam Fire Department on our responses and during our responses to make sure that when we get to the scene, that we're not just rushing in and not having a plan for what we're going to do. And you'll hear me say this several times, the personal protective equipment that our personnel have to use is on short supply. Finding it is at least literally like an Easter egg hunt. We spent all weekend, this last weekend, traveling to, all the way down to Grand Prairie, going to Home Depot and Lowe's, and it really shouldn't be this hard to find the equipment that we need to do this, but it really has been. The national stockpile from the federal government just hasn't come in as they keep talking about. And when it does, it gets allocated to hospitals and nursing homes and some other place, and EMS is sort of last on that list to, to get its stuff. So, we constantly twenty-four seven are looking for equipment to protect our staff. So, that's probably been our number one sort of issues as it relates to that. Our medical director has been giving lots of direction for us around how to use our personal protective equipment and what to do about sort of some of our high-risk interventions that we have to do. So, on the calls that are really truly life-threatening, a number of the procedures that we've always done in the past, sort of aeronautize some of the things that we do. And so, that's, you know, that creates a conundrum for all of us in making sure that our people are prepared for that and have protective equipment for that. So, we've changed a lot of our protocols to minimize the aeronautization processes during some of these critical calls. We've also, as you've probably heard, testing has been sort of a question as to when do you get testing? And so, we've worked through the joint emergency operating center with Fort Worth and, and other first responders to assure that testing is available for first responders. So, through the University of North Texas and through Baylor, we've set, they have set aside very specific tests for first responders if they were to need it, which is helpful. Currently, we've had three people put on quarantine since this started. All three of those individuals have recovered and have come back. So, we've been very fortunate so far, but it was very difficult to get testing in place for that. So, that's moving along at a pretty good clip. Here you'll see, this is just an example of our medical director putting stuff out, and he's really pushing using our personal protective equipment through this process. And, and then he's generating more protocols that allow us to minimize the aeronautization stuff that we talked about. Again, how do we assure personal safety? We've modified our response. So, you know, before, if you called nine-one-one, we've always sort of triaged those calls, and we've given reports on that in the past where we, you know, on low acuity stuff, we would send it to a nurse. And so, we're still doing that, but we have modified our, our call intake to be more pandemic sort of focus. So, we're asking more questions upfront, which sort of slows the intake side of this down, even slows the response down, because we want to make sure we know what we're getting ourselves into and the fire department knows what it's getting itself into before we arrive on scene. And then, once we arrive on scene using this, this protocol, then we can make plans for how we want to approach that together as a team. So, we minimize the number of people who go in. Again, personal protective equipment is hard to come by. So, instead of sending in everyone in PPE, we send in one person to assess the situation. Now, on critical calls, we handle those just the way we've always handled those, and everybody gets gowned up and everybody does what they need to do. But it is a little bit slower because you have to protect the first responders. This particular protocol allows us to assess these calls upfront and not even send first responders to some of these calls because they're low acuity. And so, we give them instructions on what they might do to treat themselves at home, refer them to websites where they can take questions, do telemedicine at home as opposed to going to an ED, which is really the last place you want to go during this time as to an emergency room with, you know, a ton of sick people. It's really, it's the last place you want to go. So, what we're focusing on is how do we treat people at home? How do we save resources by not really sending resources to calls because, you know, they're fairly low acuity? We've done this in the past, been very successful with it. And then, if they're moderately, you know, if they come back moderate on the scale, then we will send resources, but we'll limit the number of access to that. Again, we might leave them on scene with some leave-behind material that allows them to access, you know, apps that ask questions, telemedicine, and then directions on what to do. So, that is better for them. A lot of patients, although they're ill, aren't severely ill, and typically get treated at home anyway, just like the influenza. So, so a lot of that will apply here, and I think there's one patient in Haltam City that would have met this, this new criteria so far, and it worked, it was just fine. All right. Something else we're doing to ensure patient safety is every employee that comes to work gets screened. So, they get, get their temperature checked, they get some questions asked, make sure they have, haven't been doing anything that they shouldn't have been doing or have any exposures that they shouldn't have been doing. They pass all the screening, and they get this little band that says they've been pre-screened so that everyone knows that they had their screening for the day. So, when they go to a healthcare facility, they know they've been screened. So, that helps facilitate transition for the patient and for the crew into the hospital. So, this helps reduce incidence of, you know, COVID nineteen spread. So, that happens every morning, and they get a different color bracelet so that you know through the day of the week that they're doing. It has a date and time and who did it. So, to make sure that we're, you know, one of the things you've probably heard about is capacity issues. So, if you've watched the news in Italy and some of these other places, there are, there are hospitals that become overwhelmed with patients, which is why this, this discussion about, you know, keeping your distance from people, the six to ten feet, the social, you know, distancing is so important, right? It's so important. And, because you want to keep this from spreading. That's what the focus is, is to stop the spread. The disease in and of itself can be bad for people, but the spread is what's going to make it really bad in our community. So, social distancing is really something that has to happen, and unfortunately, not everyone is taking that to heart. We really wish they would. I think you're going to see more of this lockdown that's going to happen in the future if this continues to escalate, and I think it will continue to escalate over the next few weeks. I don't, I don't see that going down. You know, we've gone from making a couple of calls a day to making forty to sixty calls a day. So, it's getting rough out there. So, I wouldn't expect that it's going to, it's going to go down. We talked a little bit about the home care, so we'll be leaving a flyer like this with folks. It gives them very specific instructions about what to do, who to call, and how to access them. And if they can't do it, or they, if they're, you know, if they happen to be elderly and they don't know how to use the internet, then we will help them do that. Otherwise, we have phone numbers for them to call where they can then, then move through some of that as well. So, everybody gets something. They may not get a transport, but they'll always get something that sort of tells them what and how to do. Our challenges continue to be personal protective equipment. You'll hear me say that again and again and again. We have several initiatives where we're working to try and do this. We are searching twenty-four seven for, for personal protective equipment, and I can say that the community response to this has been amazing. And we've had people dropping off masks that they have, they've had at their house, or somehow they got, or someone sent them. It's been amazing to see the response from the community to try and help their first responders. So, don't forget that, that this will always be, and if, if we can't get our PPE, then we're going to have to go to something more drastic, which would be some hazmat level sort of equipment, which is then disposable, not disposable, it's re-cleanable, but it takes more time to do all of those, those things, which takes resources out of, out of the system to do it. So, this is a very important thing. Testing is, is going to be more available. As we test more, we'll find more people who are positive, but they may be asymptomatic, which means they have no symptoms. And so, they'll be staying at home and probably quarantined at home. But, yeah, that's sort of what we're living right now. We're doing everything we can to keep everybody as safe as possible, including our first responders. So, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Due to pandemic time and the PPE shortages, do you want to tell the people at home you would change the procedure, relationship between the MedStar personnel and would change the procedure, relationship between the MESTAR personnel and the people at home, the victim's family? Usually like when the MESTAR come in, the whole family packed it, you know, run with the MESTAR personnel. At this time, would you advise them what to do?
Yes. So we've changed our policies. Normally, we let people accompany us to the hospital with the family members. We have stopped that and asked that they take their own personal transportation. Again, we're trying to stop the spread, so we have changed some procedures. You'll see things are slowed down a little bit, and I know that it's an emergency for the public, but it's incredibly important that we get prepared to take that emergency on and not expose our personnel to that. So if someone is positive for COVID-19 and our people have taken the right precautions, then their risk is pretty low, and even though they had an exposure, because the person may be positive, it will not prevent them from having to be at work because they had on their protective equipment. So that's why we slow down, is to make sure that they're ready for that.
One more question about this. This is really confusing for everybody. They call me, ask me, because Dallas testing, they say you have to be 65 over, right? And the temperature, whatever.
Yeah.
Just for example, if a person, before they call MESTAR or fire department or police, say, "I might got the virus," what you advise them, what condition they should call for Tarrant County right now?
Right. So, you know, the best thing that you could possibly do right now is there are some great access points without calling 911 to find out if you sort of meet the screening criteria for further follow-up, getting a telemedicine visit from a doctor, so you don't have to leave your own house. And then they can arrange, because a doctor has to do a prescription, an order for your test, right? And then they can refer you to a place to be tested. And so that means that if you have, if you're running a low-grade fever over 100.4, right? 100.4 in that area, then you're certainly someone who we should worry about. If you have a dry cough, if you have, you know, just feel fatigued and you have a sore throat, if you have those sort of flu-like symptoms, then it's possible. It's possible you may just have influenza. So the purpose of the screening is to sort of make a decision as to, do you need to be tested for coronavirus? Do you need to be tested for influenza first? Because if you have influenza and they can, you know, you have A or strep or something, then they can identify that, and then you don't need a Corona test, right? Because you know what they have. The treatment is going to be very similar, you know, stay home, you know, medicines to reduce fever and cough and things like that. So if you're really, really sick, i.e. you have shortness of breath, and, you know, your fever gets higher, then yes, you should be seen immediately. But through these screening tools, and Baylor has a great one, Medical City has a great one as well, and we're leaving that information with patients, and you can get that information off of our websites, off of Baylor's website, and off of Medical City's Fort Worth website. But if you follow that, you will get to talk to a doctor. A doctor will assess you, and then the doctor will inform you as to what you need to do. Mostly, this helps keep people out of the emergency room and gets you screened to a place where you can get a test. And there are tests available. It's not like you can't get a test. The results, however, take anywhere from one to 10 days for them to come back. So they don't just come back immediately. So, and the public health department, they do testing, but they don't have a lot of tests. So most of it is being done commercially, which is why we recommend, you know, Baylor and Fort Worth and THR as a place where you would start that discussion, as opposed to calling 911.
Thank you, sir. Counselor, you have any questions?
Counselor Grohl. Go ahead. Right now, I know Dallas had a drive-through testing, and that's what probably people are talking, asking about. And I know there's specific criteria. You wouldn't happen to know what the criteria? I know it was over, like Dr. Trong mentioned, over 65, but my understanding is also it's for first responders, first responders and healthcare workers, is that testing was for?
Yeah, prominently that too, that was for. Healthcare workers, first responders. It is open to everyone, so the drive-through that they have in Dallas County is open to everyone. So if you're a healthcare worker or first responder, you can go there. But the criteria is pretty much what we just described. It could be anyone, doesn't necessarily have to be 65, but the 65-year-olds and older tend to have more complications from this, so that's certainly who they're looking for.
Yep.
But if you have symptoms of the COVID-19, then you should seek advice. We're recommending the apps.
Mm-hmm.
Because they will help guide you to a telemedicine visit, and the telemedicine visit will get you seen faster, no matter what your age is.
Right. Okay, thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, sir. And any more question? Chief, you have anything to say?
Excuse me.
You have anything to add on for our citizen here?
Not really.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, so what I'm hearing you say is, if you, if you're not feeling well, but it's just because we don't go to the doctor or the hospital every time we get a little virus of some kind. I know this is more significant, but what I'm hearing you say is, don't panic and don't assume that, oh, God, I've got the coronavirus or the whatever it's called. But don't, don't panic. Just if you have the fever, if you have the dry cough and a heavy chest.
Right.
Then you take some action. But otherwise, there's, there's all kinds of viruses out there that you may get.
Absolutely.
So you don't assume that.
You should never just assume that. You should seek advice from your healthcare provider. They can be very helpful in this situation, but to your point, it could be anything.
Right.
However, if you have the signs that we talked about, a low-grade fever, dry cough, shortness of breath, you feel fatigued, it's probably advisable that you contact your healthcare provider or you follow up through one of these apps and get screened. And the screening may not be a test, it may be just a screening. You know, if you've had no contact, the problem is, of the 57 people in Tarrant County who have had, have been confirmed with COVID-19, 25% of them have been casual contacts. So it's not like it's a contact thing, it's just a community. So somebody picked it up by touching something. So why in the world would you not be washing your hands, you know, 100 times a day? I'm not sure, but that's the real problem, is it's a community spread now. It's not just because you traveled someplace or you happened to know someone who had COVID-19 and you had contact with those people. It's become community spread, and that's the real issue, why social distancing is so important. So, yeah, I mean, pay attention to it, but it's not, and it's like the grocery store stuff. I don't know why people are panicked about the grocery store stuff, right?
And how, how long?
This is a respiratory disease, not a gastric disease.
Right. But how long, how long do you have to quarantine yourself if you, say, say you got, you have mild symptoms? And you're, and you, so you decide you're going to self-quarantine so you don't give it to anybody else? How long is that period of time?
That's a great question. So 14 days is what they talk about, but really what it is, is about seven days after your symptoms have resolved.
Okay.
That's, that doesn't mean fever that you're taking, you know, Tylenol for, but after you have no more fever, your dry cough has sort of gone away, you don't have these symptoms. So another seven days after that, you're probably going to be free.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Beazley.
So out of the 40 to 60 that are increased calls and things that you're having, I know that those in dispatch are ones who are going through and screening them first.
Yes.
Okay. So after that, would you say that people, I'm trying to get to the point that I believe some people are just driven by panic.
Sure.
So those who are elderly, who are already quarantining themselves and staying home, can they catch it if they're in their own homes and they're, they're not opening their doors to other people?
It's not likely, because it's spread through droplets of, you know, from a respiratory sort of perspective, you know, sputum and that sort of thing. So if they're isolating themselves and they're not interacting with people much from the outside, it's probable that they won't. But, but again, it's so hard to isolate yourself, you know, people, elderly tend to get mills on wheels, or they have other people who are supporting them in some form or fashion. So you need to be very careful with that population. If they show any signs that we, that I talked about, you know, they start having a low-grade fever, which could be a number of things, but they also start having a cough, they develop pneumonia, and pneumonia is what, is what really gets people here. And they should be, they should be referred to a healthcare provider and be evaluated as soon as possible.
Thank you. I just want to say how grateful all of us are for the extra work and the extra hours for everyone that's doing this. And we offered to send a significant number of masks to one of the local hospitals, and they informed us to send back for you.
Yeah.
So we are very grateful to know that and encourage other citizens. If they have those extra things tonight, we would all like to encourage our citizens to contact Chief Jacobs or others to get that done. Thank you.
Yeah, please. You know, my knees are sore from begging so much for N95 mask, I never knew I would, but that's the day.
No more questions. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you. Chief, seeing you and MESTAR, you know, have a good relationship when the victim called, and you have anything advise to the citizen?
No, I think Doug covered it pretty well, especially on the medical side. What I did want to tell you all is that we will be introducing our emergency management coordinator at the seven o'clock hour, and as far as some of the logistical questions or city updates, we can certainly provide those to you at that time as well.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
At this time, I go ahead to adjutant work session, and we come to the executive session based on chapter 551 of Texas government code on section 551.071 and .072 at 6:35. Yeah. Yeah.
Today, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty, at seven oh eight P M. My name is Ann Tron, the Mayor of Houghton City. I call this regular meeting in order. At first, I would like to invite Councilmember Gay Van Zandt for invocation and bless of allegiance. Please stand.
Father, we want to thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve in this place. We want you to know, Lord, that we're grateful that you've called us together at this time of crisis to support one another. We're thankful, Lord, for the volunteers and for the help that's come forth. We ask God that this can continue to be a unifying effort among not just our city and our nation, but the world. God, please go before the military and their family, our civil servants, God, doctors, God, all medical help, professionals, and volunteers in every area. Go into the homes and bring peace tonight, God. And we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Sit down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please sit down. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Van Zandt. At this time, I would like to say thank to all councilmen who come here for a meeting in a hard situation like this. Especially, thank you all the staff, city manager, secretary, and the city attorney. And all of you in the audience, we know it's a terrible time in the human history. But together, we will go through this. I am held confident and pray every day so somehow the disease will be cured. Thank you. The first item, I would like to introduce the Mr. Archamacho for announcement and event. Go ahead, sir.
The announcement is advanced for March twenty-third, two thousand twenty.
And we're done.
That's all? Oh, cancel? Yeah, we have no, no, I'm sorry. You're right, everything canceled. Okay, now monthly report, financial report. Oh, no, the next one will be presentation from emergency management coordinator. Go ahead, sir. Chief.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're going to present to you our new emergency management coordinator. Bryce Davis started with us last Monday. So obviously, the time of that was pretty critical for our sitting. We're very excited to get him in place. A little bit about Bryce Davis is he's from the city of Fort Worth. He was the emergency management officer from two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty. His responsibility at Fort Worth were to develop exercises, planning response operations to active threats and severe weather, and leading special event, emergency response coordination. He most recently served as a planning section chief for Fort Worth's initial response to the COVID- nineteen outbreak. So needless to say, you know, he came with us already engaged in this pandemic. He began his career with eight years of active duty in the United States Marine Corps, with deployments to Iraq in two thousand and five and two thousand and seven. He spent his previous nine years in the United States Marine Corps Reserve, and is currently assigned as a company gunnerie sergeant. He also served as a defense contractor for nearly four years, working on the southwest U.S. border, across the Middle East and Southeast Asia, including a fourteen-month tour in Afghanistan. Bryce has his Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice from Columbia College, and his Master's of Arts in Emergency Management from Georgetown University. So with that, I would like to introduce Bryce Davis. And like I told you all in the work session, he is available if y'all want to pick his brain a little bit about updates on the coronavirus or really just anything that y'all may have for him.
Thank you, Chief, and go ahead, sir. Ms. Davis, thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to provide a brief update and some things we've been working on. So Houghton City is working closely with its partners at the Joint Emergency Operations Center, Tarrant County Office of Emergency Management, and Tarrant County Public Health to monitor and respond to the COVID- nineteen pandemic. As the situation changes and responses evolve, I ask the residents of Houghton City to follow the guidelines outlined in the mayor's emergency declaration. Please maintain the social distancing and stay at home unless engaging in essential activities. It takes each and every one of us to do our part. Please refer to the city's website and social media pages for additional guidance and resources. I'll open it up to questions now, Mayor, City Council.
You have any question, Council?
What was your name?
Bryce.
Bryce what?
Yes, ma'am.
Bryce Davis.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Well, go ahead, Councilman Van Zandt. Try to be nice, don't pick on him if he knew.
Yeah, I'm the scary one. We just want to welcome you. We're so grateful. And are there any special recommendations that you have, other than social distancing, that you feel are particularly important for all our citizens to hear?
Sure, just what we have outlined again in the mayor's guidance on the declaration, just maintain that social distancing and don't go out if you don't need to. If you're not performing those essential activities as outlined in there, then there's no need to be out. So just limit your exposure to everyone in the public and to those public facilities as well.
Council Thompson.
Welcome, Mr. Davis. We're glad that you're with us, and you've come with a lot of experience and education as well. So we appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Today, I noticed on the county website that they indicated that Houghton City has two reported cases. Would that be from travel or from just community spread?
They haven't indicated on specifics on that, ma'am, whether or not it was the community travel or from the community spread. So they have not indicated a specific on that to us yet. But what we do know is we do have, like Chief mentioned earlier, we do have those addresses listed in the Community Dispatching System. So we do, we are aware of what those locations are. So if those first responders do have to respond, they know what they're getting into.
Okay, is there anything, I'm sure, I don't know, and probably no one on council knows, but supposing that the neighbors in those areas are aware the situation could be, is there anything that you would say to them in addition if they have a member of their street that was one of these cases? Because I noticed in earlier, when we were in the work session, Art Camacho read a concern from one of the citizens about that.
About them being a neighbor, one of their neighbors having the case?
Yes.
It just goes back again to that same guideline, just maintain your social distancing with your neighbors and with everybody. Don't get out if you don't need to. Don't interact with other folks unless you absolutely need to. And then again, just maintain that social distancing and limit your exposure to others.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any more question? Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
A question for you. I know first responders know those addresses. The senior center's been serving the seniors by doing deliveries. If, I don't know if we're allowed to know that, but if they are a senior, would y'all mind letting Bobby know just in case we're delivering to that location? That way we will know what precautions we need to take.
Absolutely. I'll have that discussion with Chief Jacobs and Chief Phillips.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I kind of sloppy today a little bit, but the main thing, you know, for the last two weeks, myself, Rex, I'm here every day. We are working. Some season wonder, what are we doing when everything shut down? I came here, appreciate the staff, working very hard. And sometime I have to come here on Sunday, like last Sunday, me and Rex, we are working all the time. And this morning, I went to senior season, delivering food for the senior season. And tomorrow, I will do the same. I saw Council Row wife were there, and any of you? Yeah, Councilman Van Zandt there every day. I observe the senior season, they're in a good health. Some of them very positive and say, I asked them to stay home, they say, yes, we will comply. And one more time, thank you. And if any of you have time, have the senior season center delivery food tomorrow again. Thank you, I appreciate that. The next one will be monthly financial report. Go ahead, Mrs. Sedana Faust.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is our monthly financial report ending the month of February. Overall, looking at all funds, we're at fifty-three percent of revenue receipts, and we're at thirty-five percent expenditures. That leaves our total overall fund balance at about sixty-two point two million fund balance total. Looking at the general fund specifically, we're at fifty-nine percent on the revenue side and thirty-nine percent on the expense side. Property tax, we've collected all but two hundred and seven thousand of our budgeted amount, which puts us at ninety-eight percent of collections there, yes. On the sales tax side, and just as a reminder, we're at forty-one point six percent of the way through the year. And we're actually at forty-two percent collections on the sales tax side. So we're right in line where we should be very closely. Taking a look at the three-year comparison on the sales tax revenue, we were up for the month of February five percent. If you guys will remember, we were down about that the prior month. So that did put us back in line where we needed to be. I know one of the questions I've received today, and probably everyone's wondering, is where do we go from here? Just know that we are keeping very close watch on our revenues. This is a unique situation that is felt globally, not by just our finance office, but anyone who deals with finances anywhere. So know that we're watching this closely. And just so you know, internally, we've made some steps already to try to protect some of those revenues going forward. One of those is not hiring any new positions where we can wait on those to see what's going to happen. We've also trying not to do any capital expenditures unless absolutely necessary. And we're also not investing any more funds unless absolutely necessary so that we keep a large portion of that. And keep in mind, we don't invest in the stock market anyway. But I just wanted to reassure you that we're on top of this, we're having lots of discussions internally, and we will continue to monitor every aspect of our budget, and be glad to take any questions you may have.
Council Benzen?
So, um, just because we're aware of the drop in, uh, tax revenue, I just really like to recommend that everyone shop Halton City, if you're a resident, that this be your first choice to, um, to invest in, because we are at a time where we need to continue as we've been doing, stick together as a community.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more question, Council? Thank you, and go ahead, uh, item number two, CAFR report.
Yes, so it's a time of year where we present our, uh, comprehensive annual financial report. And, um, as we prepare the video here, we're going to have our actual audit firm, our audit manager by the name of Kent Willis will be on the screen with you here shortly, and he's going to be presenting our actual financials. I just want to say that, uh, their first visit out to our city when they begin our audit was last year, at the end of November into December, right at the time we were going through the transition from Fathom back to this city. And so, as all of you remember, it was a very busy time for us. I just want to thank their firm, their managers, and all of the people they had here on staff, working with us, they were very patient. Um, they helped work through that, there were many evenings, uh, Kent and I visited after hours, there were many weekends we visited, uh, when it couldn't be done during a normal business day. So I just want to commend Kent and his team for all the work they did in working with us through that transition. And from here, I will let Kent do what he does best.
Thanks, Sedona, I appreciate that. Appreciate the introduction, uh, can everybody hear me okay? Good. Well, listen, thank you guys for allowing us to, or me to present virtually tonight, given the circumstances. We would hate to be, you know, we've got a number of cases in Waco, we'd hate to bring a case to you guys, or bring another case back to Waco. So we appreciate being able to do this with the city of Halton City. My name's Kent Willis, I'm a manager in the government audit department at Tilla Brown and Hill. Uh, I did work closely on this audit for, oh, past three years now, so, um, I should be able to answer any questions you guys have as I progress tonight. Of course, if I can't, I'll always, I can do some research and get back to you. Uh, but as Sedona said, I'm going to present the results of the twenty nineteen audit tonight. And so, to kind of assist with that, I'm actually going to share my screen in a moment, and you'll be able to see what I'm looking at, and still continue to see my face as I progress through the presentation, but, the presentation's short, I know you guys have some very important information to discuss with your citizens tonight. The audit is important too, but obviously not as important as what's going on with the coronavirus stuff, so, I'll keep it brief, if you have questions or an area of interest you want to drill down into, I'm happy to, uh, to do that as well. So just help me as I progress, and we'll do that. So for starters, I just wanted to say thank you guys for selecting us as your outside auditor. We have quite a bit of competition in the state of Texas when it comes to other accounting firms. So, uh, we appreciate that you get, appreciate that you guys selected us, and hope the relationship has been as good for you as it's been for us over the past, uh, four years or so, maybe five now. I want to say thanks to Sedona and her team, John, Selena, Gitmo, especially. Uh, as Sedona mentioned, that transition from Fathom, uh, as you guys know, it was pretty painful for them, quite a bit of work involved. That happened right before the audit started, maybe two weeks or three weeks before the audit started, so, if you're not aware, an audit is have a lot of fun to go through in the first place, uh, but throw it on top of the Fathom situation, and they had their work cut out for them this year. And even still, we think this audit went very smoothly, as you'll see, uh, in a moment as we progress through. So, thank you guys for all your help, for being very forthcoming and transparent with everything we ask for, we appreciate that. Really makes our job easy, so, thank you all for that. So, what I'd like to do is, uh, go ahead and share my screen here, so you guys can see. Alright, so what I'm sharing is the, a couple of pages from the CAFR that I've extracted, you have a copy of the CAFR in your agenda packet, I believe, but if you want to just follow along up here, you can. Uh, so, as I mentioned, we finished the audit for fiscal year nineteen. Um, I met with the audit committee last week on Tuesday, and we went through quite a bit of detail through this, so like I said, I'll keep this brief, but, I wanted to start off by just talking a little bit, a little bit about the comprehensive annual financial report. Uh, what you see on the screen is the cover for the twenty nineteen CAFR, and, definitely what I wanted to point out is, uh, what you see here is the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is an award that the city of Halton City gets, and it's actually the, the award you see in front of you is for the twenty eighteen CAFR. And so, the way this process works is, after we finish the audit, uh, the CAFR is presented to council, and you guys accept it, and your finance crew will take this CAFR and submit it to the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. And that group will grade this thing against a pretty long checklist, uh, pretty stringent checklist as well, making sure that you follow accounting principles that are, uh, applicable. Uh, is the report readable and in good format, and is it consistent with the guidelines of GFOA support? And so, it's no small feat to, to receive this award. I would say the most, majority of our clients do not receive it, purely because of the work it takes to draft the report, to collect the data that's first, uh, necessary, and then to actually receive the award. It's, it's tough work, so it's, uh, commendable that you guys have received this award for twenty eighteen, and I'd like to point out that the twenty eighteen CAFR was actually the thirty-first year that Halton City has received this award in a row. Which is pretty impressive. So nineteen eighty-seven was the first year, and we fully expect that the twenty nineteen CAFR, which we're about to talk about, will receive that award as well. So, congrats on, on receiving that for so many years in a row, that's pretty exciting. So I always like to point that out, that's, that's fun, that's fun stuff. So let's move into the actual, uh, the opinion letter, we'll talk about how the audit go, uh, what results should we have after we finish the audit. So this is the opinion letter on page four, uh, as mentioned here, we've finished the audit for the fiscal year ended September thirty, twenty nineteen. Uh, under the terms of the audit engagement, both sides have agreed to a couple of things. Management of the city has agreed to take responsibility for financial statements. And the reason I mention that is because, uh, we do actually assist in drafting these financial statements, which is very normal for, uh, accounting firms and local governments in the state of Texas. And then ultimately, the responsibility for the financials rests with the city, I would like to point that out. Now, our responsibility under the engagement was to do two things. To, uh, perform an audit, so we've done that, and then issue opinions on the financial statements. And that's, of course, uh, what I'm about to talk about now. And so, the audit process is probably about five weeks worth of what we call fieldwork, or onsite, and, and working with your finance crew to, uh, make sure that we can conclude that the financial statements that you've got are uh, as accurate as possible, and accurate enough that you guys can make decisions based on it. And so, a lot of after-hours, as Sedona mentioned, weekends, evenings, uh, it's a lot of work, especially for your finance crew. But, I'm happy to report that at the conclusion of the audit procedures we performed, we were able to issue what's called an unmodified opinion. And so, uh, what that means is that, that is a, excuse me. Unmodified opinion essentially is a clean opinion, that's the highest level of assurance we can provide on this type of engagement. So I wanted to say congrats to the council, for starters, and also to the finance crew for making that happen this year. Uh, I'm, I'm sure you expect to hear clean opinion, most of us do, but it's, I'm sure it's nice to hear it from a third party. So a clean opinion on the financial statements, meaning the financials that you've got are, uh, free from material misstatement. And that's, uh, truly as good as it gets in this type of review. And so, as we can progress through, uh, what I'll do is point out a couple of parts of the CAFR that you might find useful or interesting. Uh, I'll, I'll talk about a couple of financial highlights, including general fund and fund balance, and then I will close by looking at our, another letter that we've got in the report, it's actually compared back. So progressing through the CAFR, what you see next here is the management's discussion and analysis. I like to call this kind of the list notes of the CAFR. Uh, this document's several hundred pages, or a hundred and fifty pages is, or so. But if you want a good, quick read about what happened in FY nineteen financially for Halton City, you know, what's new and what's different, uh, what's complex, uh, the management's discussion and analysis is a great, is a great place to do that. And as you'll see, it's got, um, kind of brief narrative throughout, as well as year-over-year comparisons, showing, uh, your total assets, total liabilities for the year compared to last year, and the same for your income statement, for revenues and expenses. So it's a nice place to start, and look and see what happened in FY nineteen, or what's new. So we recommend reading through that, if you haven't already. Some graphical information included here. So with that, uh, our following that portion of the CAFR, we move into the, what we call the basic financial statements. And this is where we start off with what we call the government-wide financial statements, which is, uh, every fund of the city closed up into really two columns, the governmental activities column, and the business type column. These aren't the financial numbers you're probably used to seeing on a month-to-month basis. Uh, this is really just reported at the end of the year, and it reports capital assets, long-term debt, activity, uh, information that, that is important, but it doesn't really affect your day-to-day so much. We'll, we'll get into the day-to-day stuff here in a moment, I just like to point this out. So we start off with the balance sheet, and then the income statement follows. And then we move into page twenty, which is more familiar to Tarrant County, so we've got the, what we call the major governmental funds. And these are major because they're larger, and so, whatever we wanted to focus on here would be the general fund. Talk a little bit about fund balance, um, because we always get the question, how much fund balance should we have? And, I thought I would talk about that for a moment. So looking here on the balance sheet for the general fund, what I'd like to hone in on is the unassigned fund balance as of nine thirty, September thirtieth. Unassigned fund balance is basically what's left, assets minus liabilities, that's not, uh, set aside, restricted, or assigned for some other purpose. So you'll see at the end of the year of FY nineteen, you guys closed with twelve point four million dollars in fund balance, unassigned, in the general fund. And so, again, the question is, how much fund balance should we have, uh, is this enough? So to put that into a little perspective, what we do is look at the income statement and compare the fund balance, the unassigned portion, to your expenditures in the general fund, and run a calculation. And basically, the idea is, the, the thought process is, let's imagine the general fund had no revenue, suddenly it's a one, all right, who stopped? How long can the general fund last until it's fund balanced? And so if you run that calculation for Halton City, you guys are sitting on a little over five months, actually, it's about five point two months. Um, I would say, probably on average, our clients that we work with in Texas, cities and counties have three months average. I think that's actually the recommended number, is three months, recommended minimum. Uh, so anything above that is, uh, strong, I would say a strong financial place to be, five months seems very strong to me. We do have some clients with six months, up to a year, uh, but five months just seem pretty solid for, for a city the size of Halton City. But that seems a good place to end for the year, that five months, it's pretty consistent where you were last year too, so staying right at that five-month, uh, ratio of fund balance in the, in the general fund. Kind of progress on, we could do the same kind of comparison for your water fund and your drainage fund. So looking at the unrestricted portion of equity for the water fund and the drainage fund, that's again, the portion of your equity that's not restricted or set aside for another pur- uh, another purpose, that's free to spend right now, we do that same ratio for water fund, we are actually sitting at almost a year uh, in the water and sewer fund, about a year's worth of expense in equity. And then in the drainage fund, you're sitting at about, uh, a little bit less than a year, actually, let me check that. I'm sorry, you're, you're more than a year, you're about a year and a half in the, in the drainage fund. So like both, both funds, uh, solid financial position, a healthy place to be at year end. From the general fund, to the water sewer, and the drainage fund, so that, from my perspective, that seems like we've ended FY nineteen in a really good place, and that's, that's obviously a good thing, considering some of the uncertainty that's coming over the next few months. I mean, that's, that's the whole purpose of having a strong fund balance, uh, when something like this comes up. You never know how your revenues are going to look in the next few months, really trying to watch your expenditures as well, so, we think you guys are in a good spot. So really the last part of, well, before, before I go, does anybody have any questions about, uh, fund balance, or any of the stuff I'm talking about thus far during the presentation?
Council, you have any question? We have none, and, uh,
Okay. I've got one more piece I'd like to just-
I would say thank you.
Actually, please, come on by, let me finish up this one last piece, and then I'll, I'll be done, sorry about that. So, as I mentioned earlier, we've got one more letter that we report in the back of the CAFR, it's on page one thirty-four. Uh, and the reason I want to point this out is it's, uh, it's clearly important, so, my department at Tilla Brown and Hill, all we do is audit local governments. And so, when we audit a government, not only do we have to issue that opinion letter that I talked about, we also have to do a couple of extra procedures on top of that regular audit. And so those procedures are, uh, the first one is what we call internal controls. We have to look at the city's internal controls over its financial reporting process, right? So that's your policies, your procedures, that you have in place to make sure that your financial information that we just looked at is accurate. So it's not enough under these government auditing standards, it's not enough that your numbers at the end of the year are right, but these standards also want the government to have really strong controls in place. Uh, so, we have to look at those and report to you about them at the conclusion of the audit. The second procedure we have to perform is, kind of umbrella term is compliance. We love to look at, did the city comply with, uh, laws, regulations, grant agreements, contracts, things like that, that would affect your financial statements. So an example would be the Public Finals Investment Act, we have to look at that, make sure you comply. And so, uh, under both of these, internal controls and compliance, we're not required to offer an opinion, but we would be required to report to you guys today if we had any findings, or deficiencies, or any issues in those areas. Uh, fortunately, I'm happy to report that we have none. So, no findings over internal control, no matters of non-compliance that we need to report to you guys. So, in kind of both regards, the opinion letter and government auditing standards that we perform, Halton City did fantastic this year. Clean opinion, no findings, it's, it's as good as it gets when it comes to audits of a local government, so, uh, again, I wanted to say congrats to everybody who was involved in this process. Thank you to council, uh, we appreciate working with you guys, and, um, we look forward to next year, uh, being just as good as this year, so. With that, I will go make a couple of those, um, at this point, and take any questions if you're already.
Any more? Thank you.
Here, before we go, I just want to say thank you to the audit committee members, uh, that include Councilmember Walter Groh, Councilmember Brent Weiss, and Councilwoman Gay Van Zant. Councilmember Marion Hilliard also serves on that committee, uh, she was not able to join us for the meeting, but we did send her the numbers home so she could read the book. So I just want to say thank you to all of you that participated with us, and especially to our staff and our, and our controller, John Stevenson, who is a quiet rock star. So thank you, John, for all the work you've done in backing me up as I, uh, juggle a few balls. Thank you.
Councilman Groh? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to Sedona and John for the tremendous work you guys have done. You know, I've been on the audit committee for five years now, and my first year, we didn't get the CAFR out until June, because of the turmoil of staff change- because of the turmoil of staff changes and, and now with the fathom cut over. You know, just another huge hurdle that you had to get through to get this CAFR out on time. So I really appreciate the hard work you guys have done. Thank you. And, and our auditor, um, you guys have been four years, five years now, you know? So appreciate all the hard work you guys do too. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, uh, for you and all the staff involved in financial report. And, uh, everything looking good and thank you so much. Have a good day and maybe see you in the future. Thank you. Thank you, John. Bye-bye. Okay, we, uh, before I go to the regular agenda, you know, I would like to say apologize for missed, present, recognized council member Brent Wies were helping senior center for packaging food and delivery, uh, also. I don't know, you big guy, I miss you, but, you know, but, okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I'll see you tomorrow. Okay, now, yes, sir. Now we go to item number three, the minus. Council, uh, if you don't have any question or comment, this item ready for an action. Councilman Grow.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the minutes for March ninth, uh, twenty twenty council meeting.
Thank you. Councilor Susan Song.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, that's for a second.
Okay, we already have second and please reassure your vote. Unanimous approve item number three with the absent of, uh, Council Marion Hilliard. I, uh, at this time, I would like to, uh, postpone the item number four. Five, six, seven, remove it. Four, six, and seven? Four, six, and seven, correction, no number five. Okay, uh, Council Wies.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, that we table items four, six, and seven until, let's put it on our April twenty-seventh meeting. Just in case we're still having some crisis here.
Thank you, and Council Ben Zan. You think we can do that or no?
Thank you, Mayor. That's for a second.
We got a second. Please reassure your vote if you have no comment, uh, question. Okay, go ahead, by hand. We got the unanimous approve item, uh, yeah, uh, uh, the minus. Okay, now we know number five, emergency authority policy. Go ahead, Mr. Beck.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to add an additional policy to the policies and procedures manual that covers all of the city's employees. Um, as you know, the pandemic has really impacted everybody. Nobody has escaped from it. The citizens haven't, and then the employees haven't as well. And so we found ourselves in a situation that we believe that we need to make some pretty rapid changes to things. So this policy is designed to allow the city manager during emergency situations, the authority to make changes to policies while the city is under a declaration of some type of disaster. Uh, if he made changes to policies that have a financial impact, then those policies, um, he would have to notify the city council immediately. And then the changes that he would be able to make would be temporary, only in nature until the disaster is resolved. Um, and if there were any long-term changes that we needed to make, we would bring those forward to the council, just like we do for other policies. Now, the charter outlines that the policies have to be approved by the city council and that it has to be heard during regular session in case employees want to speak on the matter. We also send the policies out to employees, um, so that they can ask questions and provide feedback regarding those policies. Well, this policy, we had to hurry and do it because, as y'all know, things have changed quite a lot since last week. And so, um, I did get a little bit of feedback. Uh, it, most of the questions were, what are going to be the changes? But by the very nature of what this policy is designed to do, is, is designed to let the city manager make adjustments as needed. I think the thing that we have in mind, um, most immediately is our leave policies. Under the leave policies, um, for example, one-year employees, they get ten-year, uh, ten years, ten days of vacation. I know, that'd be nice, wouldn't it? Ten days of vacation after one year. And then they would get twelve days of sick leave after one year, and then two days of personal leave after they've completed their probationary period. Well, the sick leave policy can only be used for sick leave at this time. And the vacation leave policy, um, it provides two weeks, but that's, you know, in this kind of situation, two weeks may not be enough for somebody. And since we've seen, uh, the closing of the schools and we have employees that have been exposed, um, we're wanting to make some adjustments. A couple of the adjustments that we've talked about doing, none that have been, um, lined out and solidified yet. Um, the vacation policy for probationary employees, because employees don't get their leave until they have been here for six months. Under the sick leave policy, they can request, under extenuating circumstances, to use sick leave and also personal leave. But on the vacation policy, they can't use any vacation leave until they've completed their probationary period. So we're thinking that we need to loosen that up and let them request to use it if something happens, and they need to. Um, additionally, our sick leave policy requires that after an employee has been absent for three days, they have to bring a doctor's note. Or after they've used forty hours and they have not brought a doctor's note during the fiscal year, we require a doctor's note. Well, we certainly don't want to force our employees to have to go to a doctor and expose them to other things, or even just the risk of trying to get into their doctor when they may be out for a sore throat or a migraine or something like that. So we were looking to relax those rules as well. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, uh, Council Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Beckett, for bringing this to us. Definitely agree that we need to let this be in the hands of the city manager and of course, you as Director of Human Resources working together. The most important thing I think that we have to understand is the importance of our employees as they do give a service to our citizens even in desperate or hard times. So, um, I'm all in favor of these normal restrictions or guidelines being loosened to help those, the, the employees that really need it. And hopefully, we will see very few of our employees being sick, hopefully. But this is a mean virus, so we'll just deal with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Any more question, uh, comment from council? I see none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, this item number five, ready for a motion. Councilman, uh, Wies.
Thanks, Mayor. Motion of item five, emergency authority policy, R dash two zero two zero dash zero one three dash zero two. I make the motion we approve.
Thank you, sir, Council, uh, Grow, Water Grow.
May I ask for a second?
We got a second. Please reassure your vote, item number five. Item five unanimous approve. And now I move to number eight, continuation of declaration of public health emergency. Uh, Ms. Fare.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is, uh, um, the continuation of declaration of public health emergency. When the, uh, uh, mayor, uh, enacts a declaration of emergency, within seven days, the council has to decide, uh, whether to extend that declaration or to make changes to that declaration. So as most of, all of you know, that on Sunday, the March the twenty-second at five P M, uh, the, an amendment went out to that original declaration, uh, which, uh, I would ask the city attorney if he would go over what that is, just, just to, uh, uh, remind the public. And then we can talk about exactly what the, uh, council wants to do in turn or discuss, uh, the extension.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, Council, you have any, uh, question?
Do you want me to go through this?
Oh, I'm sorry, wait.
Yes, okay. So to, to state what's currently in effect, the mayor has adopted this, it's in effect right now for all citizens of Holton City. Um, the, the basic restriction is that gatherings of more than ten people are prohibited. And, uh, the, the declaration encourages the practice of social separation, which is for people to have sufficient space wherever they are, to be at least six feet apart at all times. It also encourages, uh, that in any location where people are gathered, that a tracking list be kept of individuals and their contact information, because if there is an incident that we later need to contact people, that, that is very helpful to have. Uh, the following types of locations, um, are, are declared to be not acceptable for occupancy of any kind. That includes bars, lounges, taverns, commercial amusement establishments, bingo halls, theaters, gyms, private clubs, hair and nail salons and barber shops, estheticians and related personal care businesses, spas and massage parlors, tattoo and piercing parlors and tanning salons, residential meeting spaces, event centers, hotel meeting spaces and ballrooms, outdoor plazas, malls, and retail stores that do not sell essential household goods. Again, no occupancy is allowed in any of those locations. With regard to food establishments, all in-house dining is closed. Drive-in, drive-through, and takeout and delivery is permitted. Again, uh, it is encouraged that social separation occur in those situations. With regard to worship services, they are closed for in-person services, provided that employees can attend to produce audio or video services to, to the parishioners. So that, that is effectively what the current declaration provides. Uh, there are some more details we could go into if necessary. Yes, okay. Um, as an explanation of what businesses are still allowed to be open, uh, those include grocery stores, stores selling essential household goods, convenience and package stores, pharmacies and drug stores, daycare facilities, medical facilities, nonprofit service providers, homeless and emergency shelters, office buildings, essential government buildings, airports and transit facilities, transportation systems, residential buildings and hotels, and manufacturing and distribution facilities. Again, as with the other, uh, permitted, uh, locations, uh, it is encouraged to practice social distancing by keeping people six feet apart at all times and to keep a tracking list of individuals who are located there. So to follow up on what your city manager was stating, uh, that declaration will expire in the next day or two because by statute, it is only valid for seven days. And it is up to the city council to determine whether or not to extend that or whether or not to add additional prohibitions or conditions to, to the declaration. And so that's what's before you tonight to determine whether or not you're in favor of extending these regulations, and if so, under what conditions?
Thank you, city manager and city attorney. Council Ben Zan.
So is it within our rights then to extend this for thirty days with the stipulation that if stronger, uh, stipulations come out, we can make arrangements then?
You have that authority, absolutely. You, you, you can provide the period of extension, um, which can either be extended if it turns out to be too short or if it's not necessary to go that long, then it can be terminated by the council at any time. Um, you could authorize, uh, the mayor to, to, uh, adopt an amended declaration if there are stricter, uh, restrictions that come out from the county judge or from the governor's office also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Ben Zan. Council Water Grow.
Hey, Mayor, I think, uh, we should go into executive session because I have some other questions that, that I would like to talk to the attorney about, uh, before discussing it here on the dais.
Okay, any more question? No? This item ready for, uh, motion.
Oh, you want to go executive session before?
That's what I would like to do, but you want to-
Correction, uh, this item, we go to executive session continuing, and, uh, we will make the decision after we get out the executive session. Okay, now, uh, we move to city staff report. You have anything? No? How about, uh, oh? Hey, hang on. Do, do you, you want to go this one, discuss about eight and come back? Or we can go to executive session and make the decision later?
Mayor, if you want to ask for staff reports now, we, we can finish the rest of the agenda and then adjourn into executive session.
It's your meeting, Mayor, so whatever you want to do.
I mean, ask the correct way to do it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, so earlier the council asked if we knew the transmission type of our two cases. And, uh, Tarrant County just updated their website, so, uh, the, it's going to be linked to travel. So I just wanted to update you on that. Both, both of our cases in town are linked to travel. Okay?
I would like to ask the police chief to come up to the podium and explain how this is enforced, these rules during a declaration.
All right, just had to do that to irritate her. Uh, Council Mayor, so, um, kind of what y'all are piggybacking off of now. The declaration that the mayor signed, there's no authority, enforcement authority, penalties associated with that declaration. So it's basically a recommendation or a, a notification of what's occurring. Well, the way we were going to address that is through an administrative process using COs, um, as, as the law enforcement arm of, of that ordinance or that, that declaration. This, yeah, certificate of occupancy. But however, after Judge Whitley, uh, on March twelfth, adopted or declared the state of emergency, he also failed to, or the commissioners court failed to put, uh, penalties associated with violation of that declaration. Last night, they adopted a new declaration and it included the amendments of a penalty associated with it. The pen, the penalty, and I'll read it word for word so it's not misconstrued. Failure to comply with the emergency management plan or with a rule, order, or ordinance adopted under this plan is an offense punishable by a fine of up to one thousand dollars or confinement in jail for a term up to and including one hundred and eighty days. So this is a violation of any of the, the amendments or the declarations set by the county government or the declarations set by the city government at this point. Um, again, our purpose is not to do any law enforcement action on this. Um, our role is education, um, compliance, and then if people still continue to refuse, we will arrest for the offenses. Um, these are not citable offenses. We cannot write a citation to leave. They are county-grade offenses, so anyone arrested or charged with any of these will be transported straight to the county jail. Any questions?
Let me ask you a question. After I signed the declaration of health emergency, and I know you and, uh, fire chief and your staff went out there to deliver that, right?
Yes, sir.
In person?
Yes, sir.
Did you have any lawsuit lie, okay, you, you got it? Because later on, they maybe say, I didn't get it.
I would say eighty to eighty-five percent of the businesses in Holton City got those. The only reason a hundred percent didn't is because the ordinance, or the declaration was changed by the county commissioners court during the commission of that, which lowered it from fifty people to ten people. So your declaration that we were handing out was not valid at that point.
Okay, any? Yeah.
And that, and that's another thing to keep in mind is, uh, we've asked the county commissioners to give us a heads up if anything was going to become more stringent. Um, they haven't said anything yet. However, their county commissioners meet tomorrow at ten o'clock in the morning. You can live stream that, that, that meeting online. So if you want to get a heads up on anything that's coming down, that would be a prime time to be watching.
Let me ask you, uh, anytime we have a new declaration, do we have to hand out in person to the business or not?
No, sir. I think at this point in time, I think it's very widely known.
Do they require to be in Spanish and Vietnamese too, or what?
We will do our best to make sure that the people, anytime they are, they call us, we have people that can both speak, um, English, Spanish. Um, we can use language line if they need to translate into a different language that we don't have anybody to speak, so that they understand the stipulation. that we don't have anybody to speak, so that they understand the stipulations that are placed upon them.
Okay, so thank you. Council, you have any question? Council Benzette?
I don't really know that this is necessarily for you, Chief Phillips, but is there any way that for those who are watching tonight that we could get the website information for the meeting tomorrow morning at ten?
Um, I can see if I can find it before we leave tonight. Um, I know you can go on the Tarrant County Commissioners' website and you should be able to just do, uh, same thing with Halton City. Just go onto their live, and they only live stream. They don't do the afterwards Vemo.
No question. Thank you, chief. Appreciate that. We go to item number ten, future agenda item. You have anything to, for next meeting? No? Okay, now the, uh, eleven, resignation of board commission. Anyone, have anybody resign or? Yeah, we got, yeah, we got Council Marion Hilliard resign from the, uh, animal liaison. So, uh, we need to action and we need to approve, right? Go ahead. Anyone? Uh, Council Benzette?
I make a motion that we approve Marion Hilliard's resignation from the animal control board.
Thank you, Susan Saul.
That's for a second. Thank you.
Okay, we got, uh, second, go ahead, uh, register your vote. Okay, unanimous approve, uh, uh, resign from Marion Hilliard. Appartment, reapartment? You have anyone? No? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Marion asked me if I would take that on. And so I don't know how that, that part of it works. I, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, she, she did. Why don't we go ahead and do that at this moment and, uh, let's see now, the, uh, resignment liaison, item number seven. I go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, Councilwoman Saul to the animal advisory board.
Thank you, sir.
As it lays on.
Council Thompson?
That would be for a second, sir.
Okay, go ahead, register your vote. Go ahead, hand up. Okay, no, no, we got computer. Okay, uh, Ms. Thompson, unanimous approve, uh, Council Susan Saul to be the animal, uh, control liaison. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. And thank you, Council Marion Hilliard. Been serving for long, long time. She done good job. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anymore? No? Now, uh, at this moment, we, we move into, go ahead, sir. Chief?
So you asked for the website. The website's www.tarrantcounty.com/EN/commissioners-court. And that will take you to the website where you can actually get on there and look at the court's videos, minutes, and agendas as well.
Can you, can you say it one more time?
The commissioner have asked commissioners or your commissioner?
There are five commissioners and Judge.
On the website, do they have "ask" in the back or no?
Yeah, commissioners. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anymore? Go ahead, sir.
Mayor, do you want to excuse the absence of Councilman Hilliard tonight before we go into executive session?
Which one?
Thirteen.
Okay. Oh, the attendant requirement, yeah, I'm sorry about this. And, uh, we go number item eleven, uh, Council Thompson?
Okay, we're on number thirteen. Uh, I make the motion to, uh, excuse, um, Marion Hilliard for tonight's meeting.
Uh, thank you, Council Watergirl.
That's for a second, mayor.
We got the second, go ahead, uh, register your vote, please. Uh, we got unanimous approve for absent of Council Hilliard, Marion Hilliard. At this moment, uh, you have any more question, ma'am? No, we go ahead, move into the executive session at eight oh seven based on the Texas Government Code five fifty-one, chapter five fifty-one, point oh seven one and point oh seven two. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I know.
If there is an adjustment by the county that we authorize you to sign an updated emergency order to reflect the Tarrant County declaration.
Okay, Council Thompson.
Mayor, that would be for a second.
We got a second, please. Let's hear your vote for item number eight.
Let me read the resolution number, please. Number eight. It's Resolution Romeo dash two zero two zero dash zero one zero dash zero one. A continuation of declaration of public health emergency and again for 30 days. And if there's a update from the county for change of the emergency order declaration that we authorize you to sign an updated resolution to reflect those changes.
Yeah, after Council Crow resubmit the resolution, Council Thompson, second?
Yes, that would be for a second.
We got a second, please. Let's hear your vote. This for item number eight. We got unanimous approve. Now we go to the election.
Yep, I have another motion. I make a motion that we authorize or have staff make a resolution to move our election from May the second to the election day in November. Contingent on if the governor allows us to have the election in July, but the resolution to move our election from May to November with the potential of a provision to move the election to July if that date opens up from the governor.
Okay, and Council Van Zet.
Yes, Mayor, I second that motion.
We got a second, please. Let's hear your vote. Okay, the item from executive session about election move to November, unanimous approved by the council. Do you have any more question? No. At this time, I will adjourn the meeting at eight thirty seven. Thank you.
Eight thirty eight.
Thirty eight.